The regular meeting in the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:02 PM on January 15th, 2019. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, are Director Jackie Muscata-Jones, Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton, Director Jessica Craig, Director Mike O'Stafi, Director Tanya Simons, and Director Heather Douglas, and Interim Superintendent Dr. James Baugh. Please stand for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, this evening. Board members, in front of you is the agenda. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as is?
So moved.
I'm moved by Director Douglas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. Is there any discussion? All in favor of accepting the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, six-zero. Next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the board. It looks like we have two distinct issues here tonight, so let me read off the guidelines, and this is just in general for everybody, not calling out anyone. Anyone who wishes to address the board must complete a speaker card and submit it. That has been done. The Board Chair will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card, calling on those addressing an item included in the current agenda, followed by those addressing topics not on the current agenda, and we do have another card. Speakers will be called in the following order: students, parent guardians of students, district employees, district residents, and all others. When called upon, please state your name and topic. Our remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific member or to any person who is not a member of the board. If more than three individuals have organized to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson who can summarize. Please limit your comments to three minutes, longer time may be granted to discretion of the Chair. We do have eight speakers tonight, so we will try to keep it to that limit. During this agenda item, the board and administration will listen to comments, ask clarifying questions if needed, and respond when appropriate. The Board Chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or to the superintendents designated to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. This agenda item is normally not to exceed 20 minutes. The comments and interaction between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. The Board Chair will be responsible for ensuring that interaction meets these standards and will disallow inappropriate interaction. In particular, speakers may not address criticism towards an individual district employee. Such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. And personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: building principal, executive director for human resources, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and finally, in writing, to the school board. So with that, let's start the first group with several students here, along with a teacher. So I don't know, I will call you all together, and then if you're prepared to present in a certain order, that's fine. Jessica Morales-Orejela, Kevin Cordosa-Hernandez, Lucy Lozama-Espanosa, and a teacher in our district, Jesus Ramirez. Welcome.
To start off, please direct your attention to the audience. The ones who are wearing red shirts support the Latinx Circle Club, which is a club at Park Center that us three are leaders of, and we are a community which welcomes everyone, whether they are Latino or not. The group was established, once again, by the students after Jesus Ramirez had left Park Center. The three of us standing before you are the leaders of the group. At first, I was afraid to be a part of the Latinx Circle when Jesus was still a part of it. I was afraid because I was bullied, due to my race, by students from my old school, and this affected my life completely. I became frightened to accept my Latino values, and it wasn't until I arrived to Park Center that I fully accepted my culture. By joining Latinx Circle, I was able to educate, I was able to be educated about our traditions and our history. Other students also feel that Latinx Circle is a safe space where they can meet others who understand the fear of being separated from someone close. Latinx students have begun to make a change already by becoming leaders. Recently, at Park Center, a Latino student stepped up and became a leader for an event that was held at our school to educate others of our Latino culture. We aspire to make the Latino students at Park Center feel safe and comfortable. We wish to learn, embrace, and spread our culture, even if we are mistreated by people who fear our customs. My fellow student speakers will discuss about past events that have been held by the Latino community, the support we gain from the families, and the recognition we ask of you. I may not be the perfect daughter, but I am proud to be the daughter of immigrants.
My name is Kevin, and I represent Latinx Circle. The former Latinx Circle was created by Jesus Ramirez, ever since my freshman year, has been making changes in our lives and impacting us by motivating us to do something better in our lives. Last year, Jesus had the help of the Equity Department with enough money for that Latinx Circle. Jesus and the Latinx Circle came up with doing the soccer tournament, and the event became much bigger, working together with the Family Engagement Committee, St. recreation center, the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, and other community organizations. It became more than a soccer tournament, it became a community celebration. Food from any culture was available. It united all ethnicities in a common sport. Sure, it was a local event, but it could be the first step in uniting the world. When I started high school my freshman year, I didn't know what I wanted. I didn't have a clue if I was going to become a cholo or an artist. Latinx Circle taught me that there was much more than just a bad life. It taught me the deeper meaning of being Chicano. It taught me how important school is. Something that's got, that has gotten my attention is this quote, "Society is more scared of us when we are educated, rather than when we have baggy clothes and weapons in our hands." And I'm proud to be a son of an immigrant.
Hi, my name is Lucy Lozama-Espanosa, and I'm representing the Latinx Club. The Oseo 279 District has done an outstanding job in embracing different cultures within the district, and we ask you to once again support us. Latinx Circle is full of remarkable young students who are dedicated and inspired to be the change in the world. What we come to ask of you today is a fund of approximately $2,000. Currently, we have a partnership with the Department of Educational Equity and numerous families in the district. Up to this point, all of the expenses of the club, like food, have been out of pocket and donations. We'd like to take our students on educational field trips that embrace the Latino culture and plan fun events for our community to inform and engage. For example, in Park Center, we had an event called Dia de los Muertos, translated to the Day of the Dead. This was a great event that not only informed people of this very important holiday for Latinos, but also brought the school together. With supporting teachers and the fundraiser that funded a large amount of the cost, to be precise, $600, this event was student-led and gained the ability to share our culture with people in our community. We have been able to engage our Latino parents at levels that have not been seen before. We'd like to continue to increase this level of engagement, but it's difficult when there aren't any resources, so we're asking you, as leaders, we're asking you as leaders, to contribute to the resources that are required. Many of the Latino students that attend Park Center have changed attitudes toward their education ever since they've seen a drastic amount of support within their peers and adults. Many students have set goals for themselves and are achieving them day by day. At times, it's difficult to strive for success when you feel as if you have tons on your shoulders and weight slowing you down. Latino Circle has created a safe place that supports and motivates our students. It's extremely intimidating and exhausting to not have anyone to relate to, especially when currently there are various social and governmental decisions that seem to be out of our control but affect us in various ways. Personally, I feel helpless when it comes to my future, regardless of the effort I put into my education. It's as if my hopes and dreams can be crushed in one single moment. Many people in the club are also experiencing this feeling, and it's extremely reassuring to know you're not alone and there's emotional support provided. Growing up, I had a sufficient amount of support, but never had anyone to look up to, so now I want my siblings and many other students to have someone to look up to and admire. This is something we're extremely passionate about, and we hope to be able to have the support from the district. We go by Lucy, Kevin, Jessica, Yesenia, Reyna, Rafael, and many others, otherwise known by Latinx Circle. As Park Center graduate Judas Marcus once said, "We are in charge of making our community, our nation, and the world a better place." I'm a daughter of an immigrant, and I am proud. Thank you.
My name is Jesus Ramirez, and I'm an equity teacher here at the district, and I'm very emotional right now, so I'm gonna keep this very short. You got the data sheet that you have there, I took it from the MDE website, and it talks about the graduation rate specifically of Latino students from the years 2014 to the years 2017. As you can see, there's an increase of 8%. Four years ago when I arrived here, I had a young woman come over here, and she spoke as well. First time ever this boardroom has had something like that. These young people here, I didn't organize this. I found out about this. They're like, they invited me. So to go from that to this, it's phenomenal. And I know, there's gonna continue to be partnerships, and I know it's mid-year and so forth, but they're really asking for an investment in their future, and I couldn't be more prouder just down here with them. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesus, and thank you, Jessica, and Kevin, and Lucy.
So, the students and their families wanted to share part of their culture with you. I'm Valerie Neri, I teach Spanish at Park Center High School, and I'm a very proud and privileged person, white woman, who gets to teach native speaker students and assist them and support them and amplify their voice, and they want to share their culture with you, and a big part of their culture is to share food, and so unfortunately, not enough for everybody, but for the board. Is this the appropriate time?
Yes.
When's not the appropriate time for food?
Do you wanna do it now, or wait till we're done?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tomás.
De carne?
Tomás.
I need both, a fork and a spoon.
Thank you.
Thank you for this one.
This is fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't need one, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take two. Thank you.
Do you recommend a spoon or a fork?
The outside is more in us, in case you're not aware, there are three different fillings. So my plate is pork, and then chicken, and cheese, so you choose a flavor.
Pollo, por favor. Thank you. Pollo.
Pork or chicken?
Thank you.
I'll take chicken, please. Thank you.
I'll take chicken. Chicken, chicken.
It's okay, you're great, Angela.
Thank you.
Chicken.
So good.
Wow.
Now, I apologize for eating in front of others, but I wanna be, I wanna be a good host, so...
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank you very much, and now I know that a couple of board members wanted to comment or say their thanks, so if you wanted to start?
Yes. Thank you to our students for sharing, very articulate, so well-spoken, and just so inspiring. So thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing your message. Thank you for the wonderful gift of food, we love it, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you for letting us be here.
Mr. Chair, also, I would like to just express my appreciation for you coming here tonight and for the work that you are doing. You are the future leaders of your school, and you are future leaders in Minnesota, and I think you are exemplifying that tonight. Thank you for coming.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Director Douglas?
I'd like to actually, can I give you a hug, please?
I haven't had this dish since my grandmother passed away, so it's just very...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just wanna say, muchas gracias, es delicioso. Thank you so much, it's delicious. I appreciate it, and I am also a hugger, so quiero un abrazo. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just, yes, I just really wanna thank you for being so brave and coming here, and for the program, to you, Jose, I mean, this is, this is exactly what we want, and I see Rev here doing the equity work and fostering leaders of all different backgrounds, and being proud of who you are and knowing that you make a difference in this world, so I just can't thank you enough, and this is delicious, I really appreciate it. For my first, very first board meeting, I mean, this is setting the bar high.
It's down here from here, okay?
The bar has been set.
Okay, I guess we can, again, thank you, we appreciate this. This is a great surprise, and also congratulations on your effort tonight, so thank you. I wanted to move on to other members, or other members of the public who wanted to speak, and let's, we have three people who wanna speak on one topic, and we have a teacher who wants to speak on one quick thing, so let's do that, and then we'll put the other three together. So Melissa Peterson, if you could come up, please.
Hi, good evening, school board members. I'm actually the Pedersen in our school, we have a Peterson and a Pedersen, so, my name is Melissa Peterson, I teach third grade at Weaver Lake. I'm simply here to invite every single one of you to my classroom with my 27 students, and I also encourage you to visit every school in our district. We would love to show you the wonderful things that our students are accomplishing and doing, and what they're learning, as well as showing you what our schedules look like on a daily basis. So thank you so much for your service, and I hope to see you soon.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Pedersen, I will remember that, and I do know that, what, Thursday night is the engineering open house for students at Weaver Lake, and I was planning on attending, and I will, I will hope to see several teachers there. Next up is Tamara Grady. Ms. Grady?
Hello, my name is Tamara Grady. I am here as a proud parent of a transgender student, and to advocate for my son and LGBTQ students of this district. I am asking for you, the Oseo School Board, to develop a gender inclusion policy that provides a safe and supportive school environment for all LGBTQ students in this district. LGBTQ students are a community in crisis. In Minnesota, around 55% of LGBTQ children have experienced suicidal ideation. This terrifies me as a parent and as administrators of a large school district of over 20,000 students, it should terrify you too. In fact, support of LGBTQ students matches with Oseo District's core values. Oseo District's mission statement acknowledges that everyone benefits when cultural differences are acknowledged and understood, and individuals are treated respectfully and equitably, and that this in turn creates an environment where everyone can learn more. Here's what a gender inclusion policy would do for students. One, establish clear and inclusive policies to support LGBTQ youth. Two, provide annual LGBTQ inclusive training for all school teachers and staff. Three, be intentional about creating safe spaces for LGBTQ youth. Four, be visible advocates for the LGBTQ inclusion and equality. Five, provide educational resources for teachers, parents, and students. This district needs you to make a firm commitment to the support, safety, and equity of LGBTQ students. A gender inclusion policy is about respecting students' gender identity and honoring their right to be addressed by their preferred name and pronouns. A gender inclusion policy is necessary to provide all students access to facilities like restrooms and locker rooms that match their gender identity. Here, I am providing each of you a copy of St. Paul School District's Gender Inclusion Policy. I am also providing you guidance on policy development written by the Minnesota Department of Education and the School Safety Technical Assistance Center, called A Toolkit for Ensuring Safe and Supportive Schools for Transgender and Gender Nonconforming Students. Thank you for your time and your attention to the needs of LGBTQ students in the Oseo School District.
Thank you, Ms. Grady. The next two are, I believe, non-residents, but Pam Riddle?
Hi, my name is Pam Riddle, and I'm a parent of a transgender student as well. Sorry, Tamara, her speech was wonderful. And as a parent of a transgender student in Anoka-Hennepin, I live about three miles away from this building, and as someone who's looking in at something, there was just an incident in one of your high schools where it was kind of blown up on social media, and I saw it from the beginning, and I also saw media outlets pick up things from what people were saying, and I believe they got some things wrong, and I tried to point that out. And, you know, it kinda, I haven't heard anything about it recently, but if you had a gender inclusive policy, those media outlets would not have said that student was banned from the bathroom, which there's no proof that that was true or not, and so personally, I was really upset that people were saying that. And so I just wanna see someone in the North Metro adopt a toolkit or a gender inclusive policy, and so maybe my district will listen better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riddle. And I believe it's Mara Glubka?
Hi, Board. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Mara Glubka. I'm a 65-year-old transgender woman who transitioned seven years ago. I'm a parent to three grown, beautiful, healthy sons, 30, 30, and 28. I'm also a member of the DFL Executive Committee. I'm on the Advisory Board of the Women's March, and where did I see a Women's March button? I saw one somewhere. You had it, yeah. That's this Sunday, ladies, or anybody. I'm also on the transition team of Sheriff-elect Dave Hutchinson. I'm also involved in Transforming Families Minnesota, a support group for families with gender variant kids. I came here tonight to voice my support for a compassionate and nondiscriminatory gender inclusion policy for students who are gender variant. You see, after being denied my own self-determination for almost six decades, I knew when I was three who I was. I played by the rules with high integrity. I worked hard, took on a lot of responsibility at work, married, raised a family, went to church, all that. But despite repeated, and I think heroic, efforts, happiness, true happiness, eluded me. It was only when I transitioned at age 58 that I first felt really happy. There's no substitute for transition that works. It's been proven true for decades now. We are good people. We deserve to be treated that way. Kids, all kids, deserve to be treated that way. Please see their humanity, do the right thing, and develop a good gender inclusion policy finally up in this part of the world. And Latinx Circle, I support you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mara. Okay, there are no other cards, thanks to all of our speakers this evening. Our next agenda item are the school board reports. Latest one is January 8th, 2019 work session, and Director Douglas, if you will read the report, please?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
On January 8th, school board members heard from Valerie Doslin of Ewell Consulting previewing the 2019 legislative session. This included a look back at the work of the 2018 session, as well as discussing the changes in the Governor's Office and Congress, which will set the stage- changes in the Governor's Office and Congress, which will set the stage for the upcoming session. A reminder was given to board members about the Legislative Coffee scheduled for January 28th, which will be an opportunity to connect with local legislators and to communicate the district's legislative platform, as well as to hear from local representatives on their view of the upcoming session. Board members received a draft of the district legislative platform document and gave feedback on changes and additions to reflect the priorities for the upcoming year. Next, board members heard about proposed adjustments to fiscal year 2020 general operating budget, as well as summary of requests for the 2020 capital budget. This included a review of the base and tactics forecast for the General Fund, the Community Service Fund, the Food and Nutrition Fund, and the Capital Fund. The board will take action on the proposed fiscal year 20 operating budget adjustments and fiscal year 20 capital budget at the February 12th board meeting. All school board work sessions are open to the public and are either video or audio recorded. Members of the public can access recordings of work sessions on the district website.
Thank you, Director Douglas. And next up is Dr. Baugh with a report on the 2019-2020 school board meeting schedule.
You're going to skip the Weaver Lake?
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
We didn't invite him for nothing.
So, actually, next up on the agenda item is number six, the Weaver Lake STEM School, presented by Weaver Lake staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Ostaffy and our Superintendent Baugh, Directors, Cabinet, and Community. This evening, in our efforts to celebrate the great, great things happening in our schools, we have representatives, of course, of Weaver Lake Elementary Math, Science, and Technology School, who will share their recent national recognition slash certification by the Magnet Schools of America, as well as some of the important academic accomplishments and program components. Schools must submit evidence on how they met each of the standards of excellence and how they promote diversity, closing the achievement gap, integrating a theme-based curriculum throughout the school, and encouraging parent and community involvement as part of that certification process. So, at this point, I'd like to invite Dennis Palm, the principal, and Carla Jutton, Curriculum Integration Coordinator.
Thank you, Dr. Flisk. Good evening, Chair Ostaffy, board members, Superintendent Baugh, and also cabinet members. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight for us to share the exciting and wonderful things that are happening at Weaver Lake Elementary, a STEM school, a science, math, and technology school. We are so proud and honored to have this opportunity to share with you a little bit about the process that occurred during the last about year and a half as we were applying to become a nationally certified magnet school. I'm thrilled to share that we're one of two schools in the state of Minnesota that received this recognition. And it's because of the awesome staff and families and students that we have at Weaver Lake. Our teachers are extremely committed and highly trained, and because of their commitment and our ability to offer such wonderful programming that we've received this recognition. So, I feel it's just an awesome affirmation of the great work and efforts of everyone in our community, and I appreciate our staff and families that are here as well tonight. With me, as Dr. Flisk said, I have Carla Jutton. She's our Curriculum Integration Coordinator. And Carla has done an awesome job of going through the task of providing evidence of the five different pillars that were required in order for us to receive this national certification. So, I'm going to turn it over to Carla to share more about the process with you.
Good evening, I'm Carla Jutton. I'm the Curriculum Integration Coordinator at Weaver Lake Elementary. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what it means to be a nationally certified magnet school. So, our outcome tonight is for you to understand the factors that contributed to Weaver Lake's national certification. So, in 2018, 38 schools across the nation in 12 states successfully completed a nine-month evaluation process and demonstrated through evidence, reflection, and strategic action that they have established the magnet school standards of excellence. Weaver is one of two schools in the state of Minnesota to earn national certification. The national certification process is based on the magnet school standards of excellence and the five pillars of magnet schools. So, as the slide shows, those are diversity, innovative curriculum, and professional development, academic excellence, high-quality instructional systems, and family and community partnerships. These pillars and standards define the essential elements and characteristics of high-quality magnet programs. The application process required schools, that was me, to submit evidence demonstrating how we meet each of multiple indicators in the standards of excellence. This included providing specific examples of how the school was promoting diversity, closing the achievement gap, and integrating a theme-based curriculum throughout the school, and encouraging parent and community involvement. Since the certification process opened, a total of 93 schools have been certified in the United States. So, who we are, Weaver is a diverse community of learners where students inquire, discover, explore, and achieve. What's the big idea is our school motto. One magnet pillar states, "The magnet program attracts and retains students to support integration and diversity, and enrollments in all classes and programs reflect the demographic diversity of the district and community." Since its creation as a magnet school in 2004, we have worked to become racially balanced with an enrollment that reflects the diversity of the school district. We reached our diversity goal in 2014 and have maintained it. Again, this school year, our enrollment reflects the overall district diversity. Currently, in the district, 57% are students of color, and at Weaver, 59% of our students are students of color. The measurements we have available to us show that our integrated curriculum, including hands-on, authentic engineering design challenges, and outdoor integrated science investigations, work to benefit all students. The magnet theme is clearly defined and fully integrated into all subjects and courses, and there is consistency and visibility of the theme throughout the school and program. Our math proficiencies are currently 77%, reading 74%, and science is almost 80%. I wish it were, but it's 79.7%. Things that they noted in the report, I'm just going to read a couple of these, so, just so you know. They said, "The magnet curriculum provides for differentiation, acceleration, and intensive instruction in unit plans and daily lessons based on student level, student need, and student learning styles." They noted, "All faculty have been trained in their content theme areas and have received high-quality, job-embedded training aligned to the school theme and instructional practices." They noted, "Collaboration time with colleagues and curriculum specialists is a structured part of weekly planning to the theme and is documented," and that "The school's professional development plan is aligned to the theme, reviewed annually, and demonstrates academic success over time." So, I had to submit more than just one year's worth of data. "As a result of the focused professional development for staff, student collaboration and problem-solving are key components of our research-based instructional design throughout the school." So, they asked me to submit examples to kind of prove the case for our school. And two of the ones that I mentioned, I'm going to share with you tonight. One example is what we call our Lake Health Research Project. That's a year-long project that our fourth graders participate in, and it involves weekly visits to the lake to collect data on water quality. And we also bring macro invertebrates from the lake up to the building on trays for the students to investigate and learn about. And that culminates with an engineering design project where they take macro adaptations that they've learned to invent and engineer their own macro. And if you came to the STEM in Action Fair, that's what you saw on display there. In winter, the students walk out on the ice. We measure ice depth, again, water quality, and we also look at tracks out in the woods. So, the kids have found tracks for coyotes, rabbits, deer, several vermin, and a couple of birds. We actually have eagle wing prints. We have a photo of those. Another project that happens at our school, it happens with the fifth-grade students, and that's our bee research. For that, we use a prairie on our site that the students actually planted. They also had the opportunity to plant a prairie at Boston Scientific. As a result of their learning, they wrote advocacy letters to Boston Scientific, and they bought in. And so, we worked with Pheasants Forever to plant a prairie on their site as well. So, most people on the planet know of two species of bees. They know about honeybees and bumblebees. Weaver students know that there are 4,000 species of native bees, and they go out in the prairie. So, this picture shows our research from this fall. The kids go out and catch bees. We bring them inside, we pin those bees. They use a dichotomous key from the University of Minnesota to identify them, and we keep that collection year over year. So, we know that the biodiversity on our site is increasing. So, that's kind of a cool thing for them. But because we're integrated, that's not all that happens. So, as part of that unit, students also learn about the economy, the impact of pollination on food production, and the human factors affecting our food supply. And all of those things contribute to their advocacy letters, and so it's integrated into social studies and other things. So, for those of you who don't know, our basic school philosophy is focused on these three goals: inquiry as a foundation for learning, real-world learning, and project-based, integrated STEM curriculum. Since the inception of the program, this is what has guided us and focused our work. So, I can say, school board, that our students and the Oseo School community reap the benefit of staff's hard work to fulfill their magnet STEM school mission. And we really honestly want to thank you for taking the time tonight just to recognize and to celebrate the work that we do. I hope you leave tonight with a better understanding of what the certification reflects about our program, and I thank you for your time and for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carla.
We're here for questions, if you have questions.
Board members, any questions? I would like to know, how many types of bees are there that we should be wary about in Maple Grove?
So, the truth about bees, and staff knows, I could talk about this for hours, so just tell me when to be done. But the majority of bees are no problem to you unless you approach the hive, and most bees are solitary bees. So, most people think that bees are community organisms, but in fact, the majority live alone, a solitary life where they're out in the world for about a month just collecting food, and then they're dormant for almost a year.
Okay. Learned something new today. Any other questions?
Sure, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you, have you looked at the data for different racial groups, and are they similar to the school district, or is it different? Like, do you have the same opportunity gap as the rest of the district?
Breakdown by race, as it compares? Off the top of my head, I know the overall numbers are similar. I think it's pretty similar, but I'm not positive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the data.
I can look that up, too.
I do have one note on my desk that I keep handy. I was told by another organization that looked at our data that schools with similar demographics do not score. They're like 20% lower than the kids at our school. So, we know significant things are happening. You know, the achievement gap is a big thing.
Sure.
And I think in some cases, we're maintaining it, but it's a big chore to tackle. So, we're working on it, we're doing our best.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your effort. Congratulations on recognition. Thank you. And now, Dr. Baugh, you may proceed.
Now, I get my opportunity. Thank you, Weaver Lake. That was a great presentation. Appreciate that. And having studied entomology, thanks for spending time on bees, so. We could get into all the different names, but we won't, we won't do it there right now. Calendar is in front of you, your calendar for next year, 1920. And just wanted to make a couple of comments, and then depending on your input tonight and questions that you have, we would bring this back on the consent agenda at the February 12th meeting. And looking at trying to create a calendar for next year, a couple of things we tried to strive for. One was to move back to what has traditionally been in place, which is a work session scheduled for the second Tuesday of the month, and your regular meeting being on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Sometimes, the student calendar and just the calendar in general doesn't allow that to happen, and we kind of experienced that this year. This week is a good example. We had the work session last week, and we're right back here. And I think one thing I heard from board members is, you know, trying to provide some kind of window of time to review things, because often we present something to you in the work session, and we're bringing it back for you to adopt, and you'd like a little more time. Many times, our cabinet members, our staff, need more time to get questions answered that you raise in the work session also. So, I think you see that scattered throughout when you start in September. The second thing, generally speaking, about the format is I set just one meeting in July, and August, and November. November can get a little cluttered, and I know there's been a tradition here in the district not to schedule a meeting the same week as Thanksgiving holiday, because the people travel, and I know, I think, well, even next, it looks like next year, we have no school for students on the 27th. So, that can create a problem too for some board members and travel plans. So, I just, we, I've been proposing just one meeting in November. The last thing, or a couple more things, I guess. Based on a recommendation from the three board members who are going to serve on policy committee, we moved policy committee to the same day as the work session, and you will meet at 4:30 in the afternoon, so you will precede the work session, and it eliminates an extra night for you, whether it's attending to family needs or getting to a school event or whatever. We've kind of moved that away, and that was your recommendation, and it was a great recommendation. You'll notice that those work sessions are boxed in. And in talking with Tim Palmetiere, we've set so many work, or so many policy committee meetings throughout the year, and we feel we have enough time set aside to address policies that need your attention. Then I built in four work sessions, professional development sessions. If you start looking, beginning in July, in August, I put two days in there. You'll have a new superintendent. You'll want some time while the organization isn't in operation full gear to visit with her or him about where you want the district to go, plans, and all those types of things, and helping that individual make a transition and working with you. And then I scheduled one for December, just to give you a chance for an advance or retreat to get ready for your reorganization meeting and things of that nature. And then I put one more out there in March. We've traditionally had one in March at some point. And obviously, you can add more of those later on, but at least it gives you some grounding for some of those dates and have them on your calendar. Then I guess, other than that, it, I'll just, you know, I'll stand for questions and concerns that you may have. We can make some adjustments, and then depending on what those are, we'll bring it back on February 12th for your approval. Once this gets approved, then the cabinet and I can start setting leadership team meetings. We have the student calendar, yours is next, and then all those other calendars can be generated from thereafter. So, Mr. Chair?
I don't have any questions, and it does sound like the policy members had a good suggestion on combining some things. Any other questions or suggestions on the proposed meeting schedule?
Chair, I have one question.
Yes?
Is there a reason why there's no policy meetings in January and February?
Well, originally, we had them scheduled for Mondays, and they were going to be on the third, third Monday of the month, and so we took those off. Also, just Tim and I talked about, how many meetings do you truly need?
I agree.
And we can, we can scale back a little bit.
I agree.
Well, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any other questions? I have no, I have no questions.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to you on the consent agenda on February 12th. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to remove for separate consideration? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as given? Moved by Director Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Simons. Any discussions on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye, opposed? Consent agenda is approved, six to zero. Next up is agenda item number eight. Next up is Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the second reading of policies, second reading of many policies. And Mr. Palmetier, how would you like to handle that?
And then have the board vote individually on each proposed policy change.
Okay.
So buckle up. We have a few policies to go through here. Thank you, Chair Astafi, board members, and Superintendent Bauch. Revision or repeal of Policies 613, 652, 654, 542, 921, and 926 are all action items on tonight's agenda. The first reading of Policies 613, 652, and 654 took place on November 27 at a regular board meeting, and then first reading took place on Policies 452, 921, and 926 at the regular board meeting on December 18. At least four weeks have passed since the first reading of these policies, and under school board bylaws, if approved by the board this evening, the revised policies or repeal of policies would be adopted. The following proposed policies, therefore, are under consideration and approval by the board tonight. The first policy for your consideration is second reading of Policy 613. The current version of the policy was last revised in 2003. The current version of this policy, or I should, excuse me, since that time, Minnesota statutory requirements for graduation have significantly changed. The proposed rewrite of the policy reflects current statutory credit and course requirements. The proposed rewrite further delineates a limited number of exceptions to credit or course requirements for students with unique needs. And finally, the redrafted policy sets forth standards for early graduation in keeping with Minnesota law and district practice. The next policy for consideration for the board tonight is Policy 652, Instructional Materials Selection and Production. This policy was last adopted in 2003. The proposed revisions to this policy include formatting changes to align with current policy requirements, deletion of references to repeal policy, a revision to the definition of instructional materials that is more succinct, unlike my reading here tonight. In addition, the revised policy includes a more detailed list of criteria professional staff should employ in the selection of instructional materials. The new selection criteria proposed align with Minnesota School Boards Association model policies, and they reflect current state mandates pertaining to instruction in English and American heritage education. And finally, the revised policy incorporates the provisions of Policy 654, which specifically addresses a process for challenging district selection of instructional materials. Next, under consideration and dovetails with the last policy is Policy 654, Instructional Materials Reevaluation. This policy was last adopted in 2003, and as I previously indicated, the reason or what we're recommending with respect to this policy is repeal, since it's been incorporated into Policy 652. Next is Policy 452, Conceal and Carry for Employees. The current version of this policy was last revised in 2003. The proposed amendments to this policy maintain the mandates of the current policy. The only recommended changes are the revision to the title of the policy to more accurately reflect the purpose of the policy, and formatting changes to align with our current policy formatting standards. Second to last is Policy 921, Non-Use of Tobacco on School Property. This policy was last adopted in 2001. This proposed policy has been rewritten to clarify the prohibition against any use of tobacco on school property. Consistent with more recent changes to Minnesota law, the rewritten policy also prohibits use of e-cigarettes on school property. The proposed revised policy further includes certain recognized exceptions to the prohibited use of tobacco that are consistent with Minnesota law. And finally, the proposed revisions to the policy include title and formatting changes. And finally, Policy 926, Conceal and Carry on School Premises. This policy, again, was last adopted in 2003. The proposed policy has been rewritten to align with current state law, which more broadly prohibits possession of any dangerous weapon on school property. In addition, the proposed policy lists specific exceptions to the prohibition against dangerous weapons on school property that reflect exceptions that are specifically set forth in Minnesota statute. The revised policy also includes a reasonable prohibition against possession of look-alike weapons on school property based upon the threat that such items can pose. And finally, the proposed revisions to the policy include title change and formatting changes to align with current standards. I recommend that the board consider and adopt each of the above proposed action items.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. We will run through each of them, and we can have discussions separately on each of them. First action item is the second reading of Policy 613. Is there a motion to approve the revised Policy 613 graduation requirements? So moved by Director Jackie, Miss Keta Jones.
Director Jackie's fine.
You guys switched up on me tonight, and it's going to take a while. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. Any discussion on Policy 613? All in favor of approving Policy 613, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Next action item is approving revised Policy 652, Instructional Materials and Selection. Is there a motion to approve Policy 652?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Dawson Walton. Okay. I didn't hear who it was, sorry. So is there any discussion? All in favor of approving Policy 652, Instructional Materials and Selection, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next action is the second reading of Policy 654, the repeal of 654. Is there a motion to approve the repeal of Policy 654, Materials Reevaluation?
So moved.
So moved by Director Simons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Miss Keta Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the repeal of Policy 654, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Next action is the second reading of Policy 452, Conceal and Carry Restriction for Employees Revised. Is there a motion to approve the repeal of, is this the repeal?
Revision.
What's that?
Revision.
Okay. No, all right. You have repeal in here. That's what caught me.
It's revision.
Is there a motion to approve the revision of Policy 452, Conceal and Carry Restriction for Employees?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Simons. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the revision to Policy 452, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. The next action is the second reading of Policy 921, Non-Use of Tobacco. Is there a motion to approve the repeal of Policy?
It's a revision.
The revision, again.
It's a revision.
Okay. All right. Approve the revision of Policy 921. Let's start over again. And again, I just read what puts in front of me, so, looking at you, Jim.
It's my mistake.
Is there a motion to approve the revision of Policy 921, Non-Use of Tobacco on School Premises?
So moved.
So moved by Director Miss Keta Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just have a question. Is there a technical difference between rewrite and revision?
Yeah, I can clarify. Yes, there is. In some situations, if the policy was particularly outdated, I would actually call it a rewrite. That's because putting down reviser notes and trying to track the changes would just become too muddled. So in some of the situations where, again, the policy was particularly outdated, I've at least tried to move in the direction of rewriting the policy altogether.
Okay. Thank you.
So I did use the term revision. Do I have to use the term rewrite, or are we good to go?
I don't think it really, technically, it could still be considered a revision. I think I was trying to be a little bit more accurate by calling it rewrite, so I think it's all the same.
Okay.
Director Astafi.
We had a motion, and there was a second, and we had discussion. All in favor of accepting or approving the rewrite or revision of Policy 921, Non-Use of Tobacco on School Premises, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. See, the next action is the second reading of Policy 926, Conceal and Carry on School Premises Revised. Is there a motion to approve the revision of Policy 926, Conceal and Carry on School Premises?
So moved.
So moved by Director Douglas. Is there, Simons, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the revision of Policy 926, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And the final action item on tonight's agenda is the recommendation to accept gifts to the district totaling $99,637. Is there a motion to accept the gifts to the district totaling $99,637?
So moved.
So moved by Director Craig. Is there a second?
Dawson.
Sorry. I will, my ears will hurt, so. So there's a motion by Director Dawson Walton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Director Craig. Is there any discussion? I would like to thank everybody, the PTOs, the parents, the community organizations, and all others who have worked hard to raise funds and have been very generous. So on behalf of the district and on behalf of the board, thank you very much for that. Any other discussion? With that, all in favor of approving these generous gifts, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. At this time, the board will be going into closed session. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting for five to 10 minutes and reconvene in Room N10 for the purpose of a closed meeting of the Oseo Area School Board pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 to consider strategy, parameters, and developments in labor negotiations for the following bargaining groups: directors and confidential managers, licensed coordinators, management personnel, IM, principal, what's that?
I through M.
Yeah, I through M. Principals, salaried professionals, school executives, and teachers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Director Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All in favor of closing this meeting after a recess or closing it and going into a recess and then going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is recessed at 7:03 PM, and the school board will return at the conclusion of the closed session.